All right, good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, July 9, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by Local Access Program with remote participation available as provided on our agenda. I hereby call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Members are in attendance are: Role call Jacob Schultzberg.
Meg Schlesman.
Aaron Sokrat.
Mike DeRose.
Rich Preston.
Mike Swarker.
Jake Danatic.
And John Charbonneau.
Okay, and Ernest Marks excused, and I did not hear from Mr. Greco. A and Rs are none. Public hearings, 7:00 PM public hearing, Thomas Fantoni, application for accessory apartment special permit AA-33, 15 Elm Street, possible votes. I'll read the hearing notice. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zone and bylaws, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for Thomas Fantoni. Regarding accessory apartment special permit property is 15 Elm Street, assesses map 222, parcel 13, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Wednesday, July 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing be heard should appear at the time and place designated. All right, I'll call the public hearing open. Is there anyone online or anywhere to present for this?
Mr. Chair, I just ducked next door to the ZVA meeting to make sure that somebody was there by accident, but everyone in there was there for the ZVA, so I don't think the applicant is here right now, so.
Pass over for now and see if they maybe show up.
Well, you can, yeah, you can either keep it open or you can close it and continue it later in the meeting.
So, excuse me, I'm here for that meeting. I'm a neighbor and I just wanted to voice some concerns on that.
Okay, just one moment, one moment. Typically, we have the applicant or the engineer or someone present and discuss what's happening first to give the board an introduction of what's going on, and then we open it up to public comment. And we might just delay it. We're just gonna try to figure out what's happening, but when we do discuss it, I'll have you stay muted and just let us know that you want to ask a question, then I'll come to you, and then just when I do get to you, just name an address, please.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so it's a pleasure with the board. You can close the public hearing, continue testimony to the next meeting, or you can close it and continue it to later in the meeting and then make a decision once we get there.
Okay. Just don't want to have it sit in all meeting if not.
I'd say give it 15 minutes.
Yeah.
How about that? That's reasonable and it's not too long to wait.
Sure.
Give it till, say, 20 past. If there's nobody here.
You can also keep the public hearing a little bit and just discuss other things.
Yeah, we'll check back in 15 minutes on this one.
If nobody's here within the 15 minutes, then I'd say move it to.
Is it worth getting the comments or no?
No, I would, I think it would be best, in my opinion, to, if the applicant's not here, I think we'd be on, let concerns be raised when the applicant's not here against those questions.
All right. So we have 15 minutes. Discussion stormwater, or is it something you want to?
Yeah, is it okay if I do town plan report?
Yeah.
It's gonna be fairly brief.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. So, we do have the letter from the Open Space Committee for discussion. We have the email from Les Stevens that I passed out regarding potential composition of the regulation subcommittee. So, other items under my report at the last meeting, there was something that came up regarding the Mullen Rule, the Mullen Rule affidavit. So, I did talk to town council, and I was surprised by this, but if someone does invoke the Mullen Rule, not only does it entitle them to participate and vote on a public hearing, they missed one, but it also entitles them to vote on the minutes of that meeting and other things from that meeting. So, I didn't know that, so that's something I just learned. So if someone does happen to miss a public hearing and invoke the Mullen Rule, it allows you to participate and act on other things on their agenda.
So through the chair, one would have to see the video.
Right, so that.
And then write the affidavit for the Mullen Rule.
That gets my second point. My second point being, but that member has to fill out the affidavit, sign it, confirm that they review the materials and get that to the town clerk. Because if you don't do that, then you can't invoke the Mullen Rule. You didn't confirm that you caught up with the material, didn't sign the affidavit. That's the proviso, is that you actually.
And to confirm, you can only pull the Mullen once?
Once during a public hearing.
I wish they could, would change that with the day and age of everything being on YouTube, and you can easily watch every meeting. Because we've had meetings go for months.
Yeah, this, in addition to that, I wish the state would catch up with legal advertisements and allow online legal advertisements to count towards the advertising for a public hearing.
So through the chair, again, so if somebody's out two times, they've gone to Europe or whatever, and they've missed two of those meetings, you can only invoke one Mullen Rule, which will not allow you to then participate whatsoever. Just for clarity.
But if you participate remotely, that counts. If you participate remotely live during that meeting, that counts as being an intended.
Right, it's like being on.
Correct.
So, that would just disbar you from that one item. That would be continued on, not everything.
Not all the other topics, just that topic.
No, but if you didn't attend, if you didn't, I'd have to check the town council. If you didn't attend that meeting and you didn't fill out the affidavit, you can't do anything for that meeting.
Correct. But through the chair, the discussion is, oh, you missed two. You missed two. That only pertains to the agenda that is being continued on.
Well, if you, well, I guess if you missed two completely and there are three new topics, you lose all three.
Correct, exactly. Because I've had members, multiple public hearings have to fill out multiple Mullen Rule affidavits for one meeting when we have multiple Mullen Rules. So I have had that instilled where we had three or four public hearings in the night. And if you miss one meeting, you need to fill out a separate Mullen Rule for each of those missed public hearings that goes into that.
We never have a problem with a forum voting on minutes or anything like that, so we wouldn't need to do it for that.
Right. But I was surprised by that. I was surprised that that allowed you to vote on those other things. I thought it just pertained, it allowed you to participate in that, vote on that public hearing.
To the chair, the main reason on that, Mike, because on voting is saying, Russell's been voicing, you missed that meeting? You're voicing that you did the Mullen and you're voting on those minutes to prove that you're also involved through the whole process. So they can't go back and say, well, you didn't say anything on these minutes. So that's why I think you want to do it. You want to say full bar business and the whole deal.
On that, so the next thing I'd love to mention is, you know, I had a discussion with Mike Colby the other day. I did want to update the board that there has been a situation with older subdivisions that bounds were not set, those subdivisions. That is being worked on. One that's gonna be completed soon is Spring Meadow Estates. And so I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in contact with the town accounting here the next week. I know this week is crazy, very busy. But this, you know, I talked to Jen about it, and there may be a need to go to full town meeting and have some money appropriate to keep going with this to get the balance set for these old subdivisions. So it's something I'm gonna be looking into next week to keep this going. But yeah, it's something that is happening and might mention, there's a functional somewhere, which leads to my third item that I wanted to just mention to the board, is, you know, when I, when I came into this position, I started looking at the electronic files on the computer, their entirety of organization. And we've been chipping away at that. I've done with all the subdivisions. Basically, you have situations where files, some of the files don't even have names, or they're named, two files are named the same thing, but they're two different documents. So I've had to open up each and every document in every file, look at it, determine what it is, rename it, discard it if it's duplicate. So it took me, it's taken me two weeks to get them subdivisions. Now I'm going out to site plan reviews. So it's gonna take some time, so I'm asking for some patience, because right now it makes it very challenging to find anything in the electronic file, because a lot of the files don't even have names. So, but we're getting there. We should be getting there, hopefully within the next couple of months. And then when we have a senior workup volunteer coming in October, November, we can work out the physical files.
Do you want to bring up the stormwater regulations subcommittee now?
Sure. So I gave you the email that came in from Les. So, you know, obviously the next step in this process, now that the bylaw passed, the general bylaw passed the last time, the next step is to draft regulations to go along with it. So the next step is to establish a subcommittee to work on those regulations. So it would be up to the planning board to appoint a subcommittee to work on those regulations. That's what the planning board should do. The email I gave, gave you, Les just gave some ideas in terms of people who participated in the previous subcommittee to.
So we need to create the subcommittee?
Correct.
And then confirm the individuals?
Yeah.
And to the chair, if somebody else wants to take my spot, please do it, because I worked on the other half. Sometimes it's good to have another set of eyes, another opinion on moving forward with it. I mean, I'll do it, but if other people want to do it, please.
Well, it looks like they're looking for a replacement for Adam, so.
Yeah. Yeah, spread it around.
All right, so we need a motion then to create the stormwater regulations subcommittee for regulations?
Yeah, the stormwater regulations.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, and I think we call it Stakeholders Committee. I did the regs on the bylaw.
I know the changes, because it's more targeted to the actual regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, a motion for the stormwater regulations subcommittee to be created.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion of the events as well. Mr. Danatic, call is in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So in terms of membership, is there any discussion as far as how many members on this should be?
I think we bring it like we did before, reach out to maybe ZVA, Conservation, see if one of their, anyone in their department wants to join it, and then, you know, the same, the same committees we reached out to for the first one.
So calling ZVA.
To the chair, I do know Carol was really interested, Colin was, Margaret, you know, Les. I'd even said myself.
So, yeah, select board, conservation, ZVA.
Then we had, obviously, Adam from the town barn, but he's too busy to go further on it.
So, finance? Finance, Carol.
Carol.
Oh, Carol, yeah.
And Mike was from the SLAC, I think.
Right, so we got select boards, ZVA, ConCom, Finance Committee.
Well, Les was from the SLAC.
Two members.
Two members from Finance?
No, the two altern, members of the public.
Two at large?
Yeah.
And say Colin from the Sewer Commission, or Sewer Commission?
Yeah, I don't know if he was on that for the, that commission, or if he was just a at-large.
Who was that?
Colin.
Oh, he was on, he was.
Yeah, I don't know if he was at-large or part of the Water Commission.
I think part of the Water Commission. Pretty sure.
No, he's not.
No?
No.
So right now, if you, so you have Planning Board, Finance, Select Board, ZVA, ConCom, that's five, and two at large, that's seven, which is.
Yeah. They rolled to five, I think, rolled to five.
No, we had, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, we had six, seven, including Les.
Seven's good.
Yeah, that's a good number. It's not too large.
Because there'd been meetings where people couldn't make it, but we were able to continue on.
Also, you want an odd number, so you don't have to get votes.
Well, there's really not no voting in it. It was just discussion and verbiage. Once in a while, there'd be something, but nothing really.
And Mike, if you want to continue, and maybe one more person from the planning board?
Well, if two want to dive in, go ahead. If not, then I'll continue on. But if two new faces want to get on and see what it's all about being on the subcommittee, I've done a couple of them. They're pretty cool.
So you guys can nominate.
If I said if not, then I'll be happy to continue on with it.
If I can find the time, I can do it.
I can help too.
Do you want to take this under advisement and think about it and take a vote at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll put together a memo for those other boards, saying that the planning board has started the process and would like their recommendation as far as who they appoint to.
And to the chair, I'd recommend making at least direct contact with the members that were in the first board.
Confirm that they want to.
To confirm whether they want to or not.
Well, they can.
If they're from another board.
They can discuss that at that meeting, like Carol from the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee, when they, when they take their vote, if she wants, they can do the same thing with the planning board just then.
Yeah, but like, how are you gonna get a hold of Colin? See what I'm saying? There's certain people that you can't.
Well, but the thing is, was Colin on it as an at-large member or Water and Sewer Commission?
I can't recall off the top of my head. You could ask Les about it. So Les was the chair, I'd make contact with Les.
But that makes a difference, because if we're doing Planning Board, Finance, Select Board, ZVA, ConCom, that's five, and we have two at large, if we add an at-large, now we have eight. And again, I know you said there were no official votes, but when you have an even number, you have a split down middle, which is a great time. So, so I'll talk to them about that.
Yeah, it wasn't like that. We had, it was a good time doing that.
All right, so I'll check with Les on that.
Yeah.
And then, just to tackle everything in the town plan report, letter from Open Space Committee?
Yeah, I wanted to say before, my understanding is that, obviously, when property comes out of chapter designation, the select board make that determination in terms of whether or not to exercise the right of first refusal to purchase it. I believe what Sue's talking about is there are projects that come before the planning board, like flexible development subdivisions, where there is open space that needs to be allocated or managed or assigned to some, to a board or an entity. And I think what they're asking for here in this letter is that they get consulted when those decisions are made, as far as what happens with the open space in those instances. That's my understanding of this letter.
Consultant for the purpose of.
Assume they just want to make sure it's accessible.
General.
But if it's a public hearing, they're more than welcome to. Someone would come to the meeting.
Exactly. Just be made aware of it that.
Yeah, maybe, it might be maybe like you and Jen, if we know where the plan's coming up, involves it, just reach out to them ahead of time.
The only reason I ask is sometimes you get so many boards involved, because open space is a selectmen out of all, kind of wouldn't involve, now you want this board involved. Does that get kind of convoluted where there's too many people involved? If they just want to be informed, I mean, sure, I understand that, but that's why I asked, to what extent of involvement?
It seemed a little bit unclear as to what the goal of the request was in the letter.
That's why I'm asking.
Because we can't do anything about where, as she states, we can't do anything about where the property is or with it has access.
False. When we do a subdivision, to the chair, we can mandate, they're donating land to the town, that parking area and stuff like that is required for that open space, because it's part of a subdivision. And that's what they're asking, I think, is that parking area, a place where people can go and have access to it, is included in the acquisition of that open space land.
And seeing some of that means, I think that's a justification. They just want to make sure that there's accessibility and so.
And when they talk about flexible development, it's a special permit, so that could be a condition of this.
Correct, and that's what, right.
And that's, through the chair, that's, that is the case. It didn't seem as though some of these examples that she gave were all flexible developments, you know, donated land, but doesn't really.
But that mean, but donated land may not necessarily come through the planning board.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
The planning board can only, this board can only deal with the land that is under its per.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Yes.
A little. So, she's saying here, we may have little to say as to the location, but that's only when it's donated to the town, right? I mean, otherwise, the town's taking right of refusal, has to go through selectmen, and they'll judge, there'll be a judgment on accessibility, adjacency, sort of importance to the town, what it does for recreation, right? I mean, that's two different things, right? Is it?
Yes, it can be, because, again, the select board make that decision on chapter.
But why is she saying, making them accessible to residents? We understand that when a property is donated or sold, donated, I understand, like, I got this property, and we want to give you like 12 acres, because we're not doing anything with it. And of course, sometimes that ends up just being wetlands and junk. I mean, not that it's good for the environment, but. And then she says sold. What does that mean, sold?
I don't know.
Because sold, to me, would be right of refusal with the town buying it.
I think basically not overthinking, just when something like this comes before the board, just make sure they want, they want just a voice. Anything that's outside this board, basically, just.
Yeah, we can't control donated lands.
Correct, that's what I was thinking.
It may be they don't completely understand the boards or entities that are responsible for certain things.
Yeah, we'll take that under consideration.
Flexible development.
Yep, and subdivisions, yeah.
How does that, one have to do with the other, the flexible development with donated land?
Development, they're being allowed to have smaller lot sizes to preserve open space.
And then they donate the land, the land, because they're.
Potentially.
Yeah, that's sort of a, that's sort of a double-edged sword. Right, all right, thank you.
All right. I see that there's a Fantoni on. Mr. Fantoni, we opened the public hearing for your 13 Elm Street. Are you able to present and discuss what, what you're planning and what's going on over there?
13 Elm Street?
15, 15.
Yeah, 15, yes.
All right, just name an address, please, sir.
I'm sorry, coming in broken up.
Name and address for you and.
My name and address?
Yes, sir.
Thomas Fantoni, 15 Elm Street, Douglas, Mass.
Okay, just for the minute taker. And can you just discuss what's going on here at the property?
Just adding an addition to the right of the existing house for an in-law apartment for my mother.
Yeah, so I've had a chance, and certainly I've had your, the plans are fairly self-explanatory. I don't mean to steal the thunder of the abutter who's online, but I was visited by the abutter who lives adjacent to this property. And one recommendation I would have, if the board chooses to approve this, is to add a condition in that you see a driveway, a 25-foot right-of-way on the right side of the property. That is a driveway for the abutter. And even though it's on the applicant's property, they do have a recorded easement deed that says that that is their driveway and they are responsible for the maintenance of that driveway. So I would recommend that a condition of approval be added that during construction of this proposed addition, that any equipment, machinery, access this site only through the applicant's driveway and not through that 25-foot right-of-way. And this, this is a little bit, a little bit of a tangent for this, this actual public hearing, this project, but I would, I would remind the applicant that even outside of this applicant, it became apparent to me that this driveway is for the abutter, and it's their responsibility to maintain. So even when this is not happening, whether it's an event at the house, that, that they need to be sensitive to the fact that this is their driveway, and when they have events or overflow parking, that this driveway is not to be used for overflow parking, and they need to keep this open and accessible per their easement agreement with the abutter.
Okay. Mr. Fantoni, do you have any issues with what you heard there with using the?
No.
Okay.
I don't, nope, all good.
Okay. Board, any questions, comments, concerns for this?
I muted, it looks fine as such.
This is, excuse me, this is Michelle Perotti.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on. I will get to you when we get to public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I did not forget about you. I will, I will get to you, don't worry. All right.
Through the chair, Mr. Fantoni, can you tell me what the existing garage will be used for once this addition is put on?
Just stored.
Okay. For the main house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the chair, there is one minor item on the plot plan. Actually, Aaron noticed this. The addition is shown as 22 feet wide there, and in the plans, it's 24.
What is it then?
So assuming it's 24, because the plans are drawn up as 24, but the plot plan shows 22.
Oh, 32 by 22? Yeah, it's supposed to be 32 by 24, I think, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, the record put that on, yeah.
That should be updated.
That's what you had from your measurements, looking at the architectural plans?
Well, it says.
Yeah.
Am I missing something? An overhang, or what am I missing here? Because on the two of eight, it's, no, which one am I looking at? Actually, one, one of eight, it says 24 foot wide, which seems reasonable. You gotta put cars in there, there's a stairway, but it's going up, so by the time you get to the top of the stair, it exceeds the height of the back of the car, of the front of the car when it goes in. So, I mean, you'll, you have to figure it out. You put a little VW bug in there or something, whatever.
Yeah, I see that too. 24 by 32, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think he just made a typo on the plot plan.
Okay.
So how would the board like to handle it? Would it, would it, do you want this discrepancy reflected in the decision, so we're aware?
Yeah, it's correct on the plan, but on this plot plan, on the architectural plan, it's correct.
This gets recorded with the registry of deeds? Yeah, so that just needs to be updated with the correct number.
So do you want to revise that?
Well, it has to be, right. Which one is getting recorded?
The decision definitely gets recorded.
Yeah.
The plans may or may not be recorded.
I don't think the plans get recorded. These just, as he's.
Yeah, as long as the plans aren't.
Yeah.
So I can, I can make that notation as part of the decisions.
Okay.
And in the minutes, too.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Board, any other questions, comments, concerns?
No.
All right, no one's in the audience, so. Ma'am, I did not get your first name, so I'm gonna go to you. If you can just say your name and address, please.
Sure, it's Michelle Perotti, 11 Elm Street, the abutting property.
Okay, Michelle, questions, comments?
Thank you, I appreciate it. So the other concern that was raised is that there is, behind his fence that he has marked out, there is a cleared pathway that goes, it looks like a driveway, I can send pictures over. It looks like a driveway that extends to the paved driveway, as if it was another access point behind his house. That raises a major concern, because it should not be an extended driveway or a drive-through passway. So I just wanted to make that noted for your decisions.
Is that behind the house, or?
Correct. So it's behind the house, behind the fence, that is cleared, looks like a driveway. It is the width of 10 to 12 feet. He has two rocks that abut the paved driveway. However, it does jump into the paved driveway as if it was an access point, which I believe should not be, seeing that 11 Elm does the maintenance and has made the investment in this paved driveway, that he should not have access to this, this driveway at all. It should be independent of whatever project that he's doing.
May I ask a question?
Michelle, I will.
Hold on, Tom, we're not gonna do a back and forth, so.
Yep.
Just, any comments, it just has to come through the chair. I'm just going to try to tackle it first here. I don't know if that's beyond our scope with this plan.
I think so, yeah, I agree.
Because we're just voting on the accessory apartment, and it's access to the accessory, you know, that access is made to the accessory apartment. So that might be, that sounds like that's beyond our scope of what we can do or enforce or regulate.
If I may, through the chair.
Yep.
The right-of-way is registered likely with the registry of deeds.
It is, yes.
And you both have standing, I suppose you're on that side of the drive, that's your driveway, right? Is that not your driveway?
Yes, it is.
Yes, and you have rights to that use, open and notorious use of that property, and it's not a quiet easement, it's an active easement. So it's between you guys back there. I mean, it really is, and we support you and your rights, and they and their rights, but they don't particularly have rights to that driveway. I haven't seen, you know, so, there you go. It's beyond our scope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make that noted.
Okay.
As there's a new owner coming on to that property, and wanted to make them aware of the situation before their move-in.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, Tom, I think we answered that for you. So, yeah, I don't think we need to go back and forth, just, just be friendly neighbors and make it work.
It's a legal right-of-way, is what it is.
Yeah.
Wish it.
Anyone else in, online, have any questions, comments regarding this proposed accessory apartment? Hey, Michelle, do you have any other follow-up?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any other follow-up?
No, I'm great, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, Tom, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Board, any other questions, comments, concerns? Intertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure, move.
Second?
Made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mrs. Solkret. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, the public hearing is closed. All right, with that, anyone care to make a motion?
So now prepare a decision for August?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the accessory apartment for 15 Elm Street, this is map 222, parcel 13, Douglas, Mass, with the amended note made on.
Construction driveway.
The plot layout.
Yep, and the condition.
And the conditions on the easement.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, Tom, the office will be in touch with you. Our, we'll swing through, and we'll get that figured out for you.
Existing conditions.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Additional business, stormwater, it was all set under the town planner report. Master Plan Committee update, Mr. Preston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Master Plan last met on Wednesday, June 18th, and the bulk of the meeting was spent discussing the element population and housing regarding zoning, different types of housing. We spent a lot of time on low and moderate income housing, and lack thereof in senior housing. So I think we found it interesting, maybe Mike can concur, we spent the vast majority of the meeting discussing that. But to back up a little bit, we're about halfway through, Mr. Chairman, this two-year process, we just crossed the line to the second year, so the first year is really spent, simply put, collecting data, which we did. And then the second half is spent writing the elements in collaboration with CMRPC, which we started doing. So population and housing was the first one, and then at our next meeting on July 16th, we're going to be talking about, we're going to continue the housing discussion, because I guess we have some more to do there, and we're going to talk about transportation circulation.
All right.
Also, the selectmen asked to give them an update, so I met with them a little while back, and we did give them sort of a year review.
A year review.
Yep. Very well.
Time Magazine, Year Review.
Thank you.
All right. CMRPC delegate possible votes. Anyone care to be a delegate?
I'll do it anyway.
All right, Mike?
Michael.
Right.
Step up.
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right, do we need a vote on that, or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. All right, motion for Mike DeRose to be the CMRPC delegate for the planning board.
Second, or whoever.
Made by Mr. Solkret, second by Mr. Zwicker. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mike.
Okay, try to watch.
All right. Ongoing developments, you see there's a highlight under the lane at Hunts Pond?
Yeah, we have some activity on that. That's been dormant since it was approved back in 2017. I did meet a couple weeks ago with representatives from Afonso Development. They are in negotiations right now to potentially purchase the property from the owner. So they, you know, their permit has not lapsed, it's still active. However, given how long it's been, there's going to be a need to backtrack a little bit. The first thing is that we have signed mylar's, but there's no covenant in place, and according to the condition of approval, the mylar should not have been signed until we have a covenant in place. So town council has advised me not to release those signed mylar's until we have a new covenant in place with the new owner. Now, I understand that the, the previous applicant came in and said he did that so he wouldn't start to pay taxes on delineating lots that aren't being developed, which I understand, but that's going to be the first step, is to get covenant executed by the board and by the new owners. Also, I would have a new tech review meeting with department heads, I'd have, so I'll have to come before the planning board and do a new presentation, since, again, this is seven, eight years old at this point, so there'll be a little bit of backtracking that would need to be done before they can move forward, but that's where it stands right now. It's possible that papers could be passed within the next two to three weeks.
So with that, like, has there been any changes of stormwater regulations or guidance from the state?
I don't look back to see if anything's changed. We obviously, you know, re-engage our peer review engineer.
Yeah.
And they would help us, you know, bring that up to date if necessary.
Yeah.
If the plans need to be tweaked. The other thing that I think Afonso wants to do is, the subdivision as approved was in three phases.
Right.
He would like, he would like to potentially come before the planning board, if this happens, to do a modification to build it all in one phase. Now, it would be up to the planning board whether or not you consider this to be a major modification when that happens.
If I may, this is the one up on Route 16, up there, the one with the water connection and all that.
Actually, it's, it's, it's right off, it's right near Cotton Street.
It's the, shoots the house.
Yes.
Behind him.
Yeah, I've been there, right.
Yeah, it goes up the backside, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's mainly accessible.
So, yeah, because there was water connections and wetland, and then a crossing, and, you know, as part of phases, yeah.
Well, no, the, yeah, so.
Sort of.
The applicant told me that he did that for financial reasons.
Yes, he did.
The feedback, now, I think there are some pros to doing it all at once. One is roadway acceptance, where do the roadway all at once, build it out, and then come for acceptance once everything's done. Whereas if you do it piecemeal, and do a segment of road, ask that to have accepted, you're running, you know, you're running heavy machinery over it, and that's, that's a risk to the town. Also, by doing it all at once in one phases, when people start moving in, there's a little bit more predictability for them, and we may not get as many complaints being in an active construction site, because we've seen that with phased subdivisions, where people move in, and they're like, well, why is, why isn't this done yet? Why are there piles of rubble?
Oh, my God, of course.
They don't seem to acknowledge that they're living on an active construction site. So there are definitely benefits. I know the building commissioner was, was very favorable towards doing it all at once. So that's just background, but again, we're.
Thank you.
Any other ongoing development updates?
No. Since, since these have been on the agenda a couple times, and there's been no updates, what I'll do is I will check in with the building commissioner on each of these projects to see if there's any for the next meeting. I haven't heard anything, but I'll reach out and see if there's anything new to add.
Through the chair, isn't Blue Age supposed to be giving us an update?
They were, it was originally on the agenda, but the building commissioner had a conflict with the ZB, he was happening next door.
Okay.
And the farmer wanted him there. I think he has the institutional knowledge on that, so it was postponed to August, because, you know, behind the scenes, we felt it was important.
Yeah, so many things open.
So we'll reach back out to them and make sure everyone's here for the next meeting.
Put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Sounds good. So through the chair, I mean, well, Larry Welding is moving right along. I mean, they're, and the Douglas package, is that just quiet?
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to check on that.
I haven't heard anything.
A month or so ago, they think they were applying for a permit, so I think they're still moving forward.
Yeah, they are moving forward, I don't, I don't know exactly where that's.
Okay. We have so many things there.
All right. And signature, are there any signatures going around? Nope, okay. And open session for topics now, we anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Anything from the board?
I got one thing through the chair. What's going on with the drive-through at the pot shop that we approved quite a while ago?
I know.
Supposed to be a paved driveway and do work there on Route 16, open up the entrances, anybody?
All its put in alarms and all that stuff.
Nothing or anything?
All right, well, that's ongoing. I completely slipped my mind, too.
Oh, no.
So long, yeah, that was so long, everything else that came up after.
Because of the parking lot, that's why, don't worry, I'm not, not that one.
Yeah.
Did they build the drive-through yet?
Hmm?
Did they build the drive-through?
Did it get?
No, they, no, that's not.
Don't know what, looking for status. You know, highway department showed them where they could do the cot and all that, open up that, they want entrance and things, my understanding.
Yeah, you mind checking into that, and then we'll do an update on it for the next, we'll add that to the ongoing, and just get an update on that.
And to the chair, just one last thing. Is Wyton Reservoir State's going to make it for the next year's town meeting to?
Well, there's two.
To get accepted?
Wyton and the one off of Northeast Main, too.
I don't know, Wyton's was supposed to be closed, and then all of a sudden it became crooked. So I don't know whether they're doing anything up there to finish it up, or?
I don't know, I, that's been very quiet. I, I overheard the building commissioner comment that he's not sure how, how involved the developer still is. Have to check in on that one.
Because I know the pond had to be cleaned out and all that kind of stuff.
Well, there's some other things that.
And if they have it, with rains and things that were happening, it's going to turn into disaster if it's not getting taken care of because of the salt.
Yeah, so we should check in on that one, and I forgot the other name of the, the other road, not Joseph Road, but there was the other one off of Northeast Main.
Well, there's one, Williams.
Williams.
Yeah, I've been working with the developer on that. Actually, I did reach out to him, because our 53G account was down to about $90. So I told him before, when we continue, he needed to replenish that, he's going to bring in a check on Monday.
Okay.
And then once we have that deposit, we can move forward. There was a punch list that I saw from, from March, and the board did discuss the bond on the 27th of March, but did not reduce it at this point, which, which was good, because the peer review engineer did not recommend reduction of bond at that time. So there's still a few things he needs to finish. He's claiming that he, he's complete with it, but we'll re-engage Haley Ward and have him go out there and confer with Ken and make sure that's been done. So, again, that's, that's not going to be in time for the fall, but potentially in spring.
It has to be spring.
Has to be spring.
It has to be spring, yeah. Well, no matter what.
Yeah.
It has to be, it has to be the annual.
Only except for that spring. That's why, through the chair, just bringing it up, we're halfway through the year.
It comes quick.
And to get everything going on the warrant and this and that, to see what's going to go on here.
Yeah, because both, both those roads wanted to be on it last year, and then we had a poll, so.
Well, all developers want it, fast, 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 but if things are.
Doesn't always happen. Correct. Thank you.
If I may, there's been a lot of deaths of abridgies on our projects, so. The project on 16, where they rent out those pallets and things like that, there's been a bunch there. And then over at the Cubes on the Hill side, I mean, we've gotten rain, but it's tough, so. Is there a time limit? I mean, is there some sort of?
It depends, because after approval, usually, I've, I've worked with boards that hold a landscaping bond, but usually, the most you can hold it for is for one growing season. That's unfortunate, but, you know, so beyond that, it's very, very difficult, because you can only hold something, something like that for so long. So I don't know if this board had any stipulation in place like that, and the decision would have to have something like that stipulated.
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
Well, I think, through the chair, I've been reviewing, trying to learn all the zoning bylaws, and there is requirements in there for the property owner to maintain the plantings. So if it's on their property and they were planted per the original plan, they need to maintain them.
The issue is, kind of leverage just the town have to have. And that's, that's, that's the, that's the ultimate, it's like, you know, with the subdivision, your last, your last measure of leverage is that street acceptance. And then once the street's accepted, all the lots are released, then it's, it's challenging to get the developer to come back and do something on other, you know, on, on private sector, on, you know, special permits like there'd be like the Cubes of Gilboa, or something like that. Usually, once you give that CO, that's, unless you're holding some kind of bond for landscaping, it's very difficult. You could try, you can, you could bring them forward and ask them in good faith to do that, but, but the actual leverage is, is gone after that, usually. It's, it's, it's up to the, you know, the good nature of the developer.
Yeah.
Just wanted to consider for future stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe hold a landscaping bond for a growing season to make sure the plants survive at least a year.
And sometimes the plants are there, through the chair, for screening.
Yes.
And the height of those plants along the outside, near, which was Old Hartford Road there, right? Isn't it the, the screening there with Cubes and then the hill? But what happens if they die? They remove them, you get erosion, the hill sort of, you know, just sort of evaporates.
It's, it's challenging.
It is.
And the other thing is, from what I understand, I think it's the Cubes of Gilboa is, and this is where during the public hearing process and during the decision process, the planning board, I've, I've heard this from, from developers in the communities during public hearings, where the planning board will say, well, we want our abridgies of a certain size, because you don't want little saplings that are going to take years to provide, to your point with screening. And they'll, they'll say, well, we can't get that size this time.
There you are.
So then the planning board has two options, either hold your ground and say, no, this is what we want, or look at alternate types of screening. Because not only are our abridgies challenging in terms of that, but they're challenging[1692.37] challenging in terms of that, but they're challenging in terms of deer. I've seen arborites put in the deer strip them there. So, maybe an alternate form of buffer or screening needs to be considered. That won't be so sensitive to wildlife, weather, and other conditions.
Trees, natural trees.
On Gilboa, there, there is a deer retardant or resistant arborite that is available now. How well it is, who knows? But that was.
I was difficult about that because I had a.
That was being planted.
About that, because my wife and I were thinking of putting wildflowers in a good portion of our backyard, trying to figure out what the deers won't eat. And you go online and say, deers don't eat this, deers don't eat that. But when I talked to the building commissioner, he said, yeah, until they eat it. They say they don't eat it until they eat it.
But the rabbits also eat it.
The rabbits also.
I mean, the rabbits eat fences.
Groundhog.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, so natural screening, the intention is good. Maintenance is, is a challenge, because there's so many different factors that can lead to that natural screening not succeeding.
Build the wall.
All right. We have some meeting minutes. Start with Wednesday, May 14th, 2025.
Item one, minor site change, just a spelling matter.
Oh, yeah, minor mistake change, yeah.
Get one of those in your eye.
Any other, that was a quick meeting. Any other issues with this one?
We have 27 minutes. I didn't see anything.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes for May 14th as amended.
So what?
Made by Mr. DeRose, second by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Wednesday, May 28th?
Was this the meeting that I did for you?
I think that was June.
Was it June?
Yeah, because I was here for the introduction of, yeah, we reorganized, we reorged that day. Yeah.
That was in June.
Okay. Just the grammar on number 16 is the only thing that I had. Ken Frazier is still signing off on the project yet.
It's still, has yet to sign off.
I'm not sure what is, has not signed off on the project yet.
We'll just question that one. Yeah, well, we'll have to look back in the minutes on what that is. We'll hold off on that one. Is it, it's not a typo, it's more of a?
Not sure what sentence is supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not on air, but I see we found the amended rules and regs.
Yes.
That we were working on.
This is going to be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Because I'm finishing up with some edits that I'd like to add. Mr. Swicker was nice enough to give me a document on grass strips that they put around. So, I would like to start discussing this at the next meeting to finalize amendments to the subdivision rules.
I'm glad you were able to find this, because.
Yeah.
Janet looked for it. I'm like, that, and she sent me it. I'm like, that's not the one we were looking at on the thing.
Yeah, that's the most recent one that I've ever heard.
I do, I do know we scrapped the, the R factor, the irregular stuff.
A lot, she.
Yeah, we all voted for that not to be in there.
Yeah. We continue to have the weirdest.
So, yeah, we'll work on that.
Yep.
Thank, good, good find.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yep.
Regarding subdivision, just sort of an aside, I know recently the town had hired, I spoke to John about this recently, had hired surveyors, installing bounds or monuments as we refer to as, at certain subdivisions where they didn't go in, and the subdivision was completed. So, my question, and I was trying to look at the criteria for the monuments, and it's kind of vague, or maybe it isn't. It said they should be installed at all street and intersections, at all points of change in direction, curvature, et cetera, et cetera. Such monuments shall conform to the standard specifications of the board and shall be set according to such specifications, but it doesn't tell you what those are. So, what my question to you is, if I could, what are those specifications regarding where those are located?
Good question.
And what they are.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest, out my, my son lives at Spring Meadow, and all of a sudden, there's boundary markers all over the place. So, people are concerned that maybe those are supposed to designate quarter bounds of a lot, and they don't. So, that's a concern.
So, let me check with the, the surveyor who's doing the work out there on that question and also on this one as far as what the normal stance.
Well, they have eight extras sitting around. Let's throw them in.
Yeah, because that's, that's odd that they, that it's left up to the board to determine the criteria for bounds. Usually, that's determined by civil engineering, you know, and those standards. So, let me, let me check on that.
Is the objective, maybe give me a little bit, is the objective to set up there, what are they called, theodolite?
Yeah, the points.
So, they set up certain places.
Reference points.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I'm just curious, how many there are and where they're located.
And why would they, why, no offense to the fine members of the board, but why would they leave that up to the board? Shouldn't that be?
If I can go back, if I recall.
Yeah.
Well, the drawings of prints we had come in that were engineered stamped would show where they were going, and the board then would approve that layout by that engineer because it would already be on the print, on all newer stuff.
But, you know, how would myself, board members, know what they're correct on?
Because the engineer is stamping the print. So, what it is, is the engineer, is the civil engineer, the project's on the roadway.
Yeah, so the board is taking the.
So, we're taking the engineer's word on it as a board to accept what's being presented in front of us.
But that's worded oddly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some word that we can work on.
It's saying that we have specifications, but it doesn't say what they are. Maybe you should just.
Right. And I think it could also be, we could see the engineer in print, and it's, let's say, we thought another one should be added in an area, let's say, there was going to be a town easement. To mark up where the easement was going to be for a future water line, maybe a marker there or whatever, the planning board then would say, hey, we want another marker here.
For property bounds, which is actually, say, as little as four for rectangular property, usually concrete bounds or stone bounds they use that are permanent. So, they can only be up above the gra, there's standards for this, for like a property line.
But these aren't property, they're, they're road reference.
This is for, if you want to survey your property inside of the development, they, the surveyor has a mark, known mark to go by, nothing to do with personal property.
Question is, if I could, sorry, what criteria did they use in how they locate these properties if it's not really about people's property?
That's what I knew.
I think it's all just laser, GPS, cross ties, and.
Maybe we can work on, on making that clear. And I will check on the situation with the state.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have a lot to tackle with the regulations there, so. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Socrate. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Your adjourn.